Madam Clerk.
All right. Councilman Baudier.
Present.
Councilman Chatelain.
Present.
Councilman Hewitt.
Present.
Councilman Landry.
Present.
Councilman Murray.
Present.
Mayor Mosca.
Present.
Police Chief Walker.
Here.
Fire Chief St. Seer is absent. And City Attorney Corcel.
Any special presentations? Anyone wish to address the council? Could you so now?
Hi, my name is Alan Boudreau. I live at 15 Colonial Lane. And last month, I announced that I was going to be running for the City Council of Harrahann. And on Wednesday, I did in fact qualify. I look forward to addressing the issues facing the city of Harrahann. The citizens of Harrahann deserve nothing less. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the rank and file of our police department for their hard work and diligence for having Harrahann recognized as by a leading real estate blog for being listed as the sixth safest city in the state of Louisiana. And I quote, "Harrahann is so safe that the locals only one in 752 chance of being a victim of a crime, which was the lowest chance on our list." I think that's an achievement. And I'd like to say that by entering this race, I would put the Boudreau equation, transparency plus truth equals trust. And that's the Boudreau solution. Thank you.
Councilman. My name is Michael Maxwell. I live at 8209 Huntley Lane. And I would like to report that I have also qualified to run for city council. And I would also like to say that in my going through the city and shaking hands, I've gotten a very, very positive response from the people. They're very interested in this election, and so am I. I want to wish all a very nice evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Mayor Mosca, Chief of Police Walker, my friend, City Attorney David Corcel. My name is Johnny Lee, and I'm running for the First Parish Court Division B seat, which y'all are encompassed in that district. The tickets that are not handled by your court here go to First Parish Court. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I went to public schools in Jefferson Parish my whole life until Rumel High School, graduated from Rumel, then went to UNO, then went to LSU Law School. Graduated from LSU Law School in 1975, came back to Metairie, was with a little firm on Metairie Road, Moleaire and Flanagan. That was when y'all old people might remember, old like me, or I remember Jules Moleaire. Well, by the time I started, he wasn't really practicing anymore, but he was still around. The man I really practiced with, who was my mentor, was James Flanagan. This was an honorable man. He was a brilliant man. He taught me to respect people, just like my daddy had taught me to respect people. And I learned that. And in all my career, you can talk to anyone I've dealt with, but I deal with people with respect and dignity. After loss, I mean after a few years with that firm, maybe it was because I watched a little too much Perry Mason, but I decided I wanted to be a courtroom lawyer. So the only way to really become a courtroom lawyer is to be hired by the District Attorney's Office, because you try cases all the time. Fortunately, Mr. Momalitis saw fit to hire me as an Assistant DA. I started in 1980 for Mr. Momalitis. I started in screening shortly thereafter he put me in a felony court. I tried major murder trials, first degree murders, rapes. I had almost 100 jury trials. He also assigned me after my second year to go to traffic court, First Parish Court, which is the seat I'm running for. At that time, it was on Clearview. Maybe y'all don't remember that. Now, it's on David Drive and West Metairie, where it's been for a number of years. I did major felonies approximately 1990. Mr. Momalitis asked me if I'd like to be full-time at the First Parish Court. I said, "Yeah, I'd had enough of these major felonies." So I became an Assistant DA at First Parish Court, and I handled the daytime docket and still handled the nighttime docket. The cases we handle in the daytime docket are DWI second offenses, the most serious offense. But we handle simple batteries, disturbing the pieces, drunk in public, all that sort of stuff. I dealt with hundreds of people a day. Did that until 1996. Mr. Momalitis retired, and Paul Conick was elected. I was one of only a couple of people that Paul Conick retained in his office. Now, I stayed with Paul for about three and a half years. The reason I left was because Paul had determined when he was running that he wanted people full-time. And even though I wasn't full-time, and the reason I wasn't full-time is I had five children. Now they're grown, my youngest is in law school at LSU. That gives me the opportunity to embark on what I'm trying to do and be an elected judge. Anyway, so I resigned from the District Attorney's Office. Immediately thereafter, I became the public defender. Where? At First Parish Court. Where am I now? What docket did I handle this morning with Judge Olivier, who's from your area, and she's a fine lady and a fine judge? First Parish Court. I handled the docket this morning. I'll handle the docket Monday morning. I'll handle the docket until I'm elected. Little, and I don't want to take up, can I, am I going on too long? Okay, thank you. A little bit about myself, as I told you about schooling. With the, I have been a member of St. Catherine's Sienna Church for a number of years, taught confirmation classes for three years there, was on the board for the school. Now I'm presently at St. Francis Xavier. I've been the president of the Jefferson Bar Association. I'm in the House of Delegates for the State Bar Association for the last 20 years. I have, for the last several years, given seminars and have been speaker, been a speaker at DWI seminars to teach other lawyers how to defend and how to prosecute DWIs, which again, is the most serious offense at First Parish Court. I have been there around, I've been around there long enough to know that there are better ways to do things. And as a judge, I'm going to change things a little bit. Last week, I met with Sheriff Noel Norman about traffic tickets. There are ways to make the system over there more effective and efficient. There are ways that we can streamline it, that the ticket will go down for you citizens, yet there'll be no loss of income. He's convinced we can do it. I'm convinced we can do it, and we can do it. Finally, I would ask you to consider just my experience, my demeanor, as you'll see it through the campaign, and I ask you to consider me for the next judge of First Parish Court. I appreciate y'all. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Harrahann. My name is Craig Johnson. I wanted to announce that I am a candidate for city council. I will be walking the streets within the next few months, looking forward to meeting Sorry. Looking forward to meeting everybody and talking about the issues that are with the city. If I don't get a chance to come see you right away and you would like to talk to me, please call me anytime, (259) 5763. I am resident at Harrahann for the past 20 years. I live at 7021 Gaspere Place with my wife and my two kids, my daughter and my stepson. And I am associated with the St. Rita Dads Club and the St. Rita Knights of Columbus. And that's it. Please vote for me November 4th. Thank you. Bye.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Chief. My name is Pat McDaniel, 829 Roseland Parkway. I did qualify as well to run for Harrahann Council November 4th. I will be walking the streets as well. Please contact me at (504) 616-4448. Look forward to serving and continue to keep Harrahann safe.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, viewing audience. My name is Tim Walker. I am your police chief. I was just elected in May, but that's to fill the unexpired term for this year, 2014. The election coming up in November is for the next four years, and I am seeking reelection. And I appreciate your support. Also, another note, this past week, I was challenged by Lieutenant Andrew Walzdoff at the Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office on the ALS bucket challenge. I'm going to take it Saturday morning at 9:00 o'clock in front of headquarters, and I'm challenging our mayor and council, who has not participated in it so far.
David writes the check real quick.
Please join me. If you've already been, if you've already been, that's fine, but if you haven't, please join me.
The senior senator has challenged Paul Johnson and myself. I don't know if I'm going to do it twice.
That's fine. Come on out.
Chief, why don't you give your report? You want to wait?
Thanks.
Anyone else want to address the council? All right, we're going to suspend the rules and go to a motion to go to give these permits out so people can get out of here. Motion by Murray, second by Baudier. All in favor? Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays. Let's go with Knights of Columbus first.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to rotate the podium so I can address you. Thank y'all for being here. I'd like to announce that I'm not running for office. My name is Steve Corle. I'm at 566 Gordon Avenue, here to represent the St. Rita Knights of Columbus tonight. The Knights of Columbus, for those of you that may not be aware, is a philanthropic organization. We do a lot of things for our community, for our parish, for our church. One of the things we're most known for is our funding and running of the Harrahann Food Pantry, which provides food and groceries for the citizens of zip code 70123. But like all philanthropic organizations, we need funds. We need money to do the things we, our mission is to do. So therefore, we're requesting the council to give us approval to have a mini Oktoberfest on the grounds of our hall. Now, for those of you that don't know where our hall is, it's on Columbus Avenue, which is between Oak Street and Hickory. Everybody knows where the rickshaw is, it's behind the rickshaw. So anyhow, we'd like to have a mini Oktoberfest, October 11th, from 12 noon to 9:00. We've contacted the Deutsche House, and they are willing to support us in providing food and beverage, so we're going to have real genuine German food and drink there. We're going to, we're asking you guys to help us close off Columbus Avenue, which is a small street between Hickory and Oak, just from our property line to our property line. The rest of it will be held on our grounds. Anyhow, I think I covered all the times and all that stuff. I'd just like to, you know, ask the council that they consider our request. We invite all citizens of Harrahann to come out and have a genuine Oktoberfest function right here in Harrahann. The cost is going to be minimal. And for those of you guys who are in office and want to get out and meet your constituents, it'll be a great venue for that. So, and yes, we will have beer and wine if the city so deems.
Steve, car show? You going to say something about the car show?
I don't know much about the car show, so I'm going to invite one of these guys that goes to the same haberdashery as me. To come up and speak about that.
Let's vote on the Knights first. Motion. Motion by Murray, I'm sorry.
Motion by Landry, second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays.
Thank you.
Tough act to follow. Mr. Mayor, Council, administration, and citizens. My name is Tommy Flick. I live at 32 Dosia Drive in Harrahann. I'm also representing the St. Rita Knights of Columbus. I'd just like to announce and let everybody know that our sixth annual, it's hard to believe it's six years, our sixth annual car show is coming up on Saturday, the 30th of August. It's going to be held at the St. Rita School Grounds. It's going to be from 6:00 PM till 9:00 PM. We expect to have a good crowd yet again, some good food, and a lot of nice cars to look at. So I'd like to invite everyone to come by and see us. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the date again?
The date is the 30th, August 30.
Do you have a contact number? Pardon? Do you have a contact number or something?
Anyone here for the Night Out Against Crime in St. Rita? How about the wedding reception on the queue? All right, go back to the regular agenda.
The Night Out Against Crime is going to be the police department.
All right, we'll do that later, or what? We'll do it later. Madam Clerk, approval of minutes?
Reading of.
Motion by Landry, second by Baudier to dispense with the reading of the minutes for the council meeting of July 17th. All in favor? Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays. Motion by Murray, second by Hewitt, to approve those minutes. All in favor? Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays. Communications, Madam Clerk.
Board of Appeals and Adjustments did not meet in July, and the Planning and Zoning Board didn't meet in August.
All right, Madam Clerk, resolutions.
The following resolution was offered unanimously by the council. A resolution naming the new scoreboard on Wilcox Field at Sonya Playground, Freddie Wilcox Scoreboard, in honor of the former mayor of the city of Harrahann, Mr. Freddie Wilcox. Whereas Jefferson Parish Councilman Paul Johnston, District 2, granted the city of Harrahann the funds to purchase a new scoreboard for Wilcox Field at Sonya Playground. Whereas the city of Harrahann would like to name the scoreboard Freddie Wilcox Scoreboard in honor of the late Freddie Wilcox. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Harrahann City Council, acting as governing authority of said city, that Section 1, the new scoreboard for Wilcox Field at Sonya Playground in the city of Harrahann will be named Freddie Wilcox Scoreboard. The foregoing resolution having been submitted to a vote, the vote thereon was as follows.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays.
Next resolution?
Ordinance to approve.
When their resolution.
You want to do the one with the memorandum of agreement with the cities?
No, that's further down, I believe.
It's a resolution.
It's not a resolution.
No, it's an ordinance.
It says resolution.
Ratifying the memorandum agreement? Here, Mayor.
No, it's an ordinance.
I have an ordinance adopting development agreement.
No, this is a different one.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's an add-on, right? I'm sorry. Motion to suspend the rules to add-on a memorandum of agreement with the other cities for the Emergency Management Agency. Motion by Murray, second by Hewitt. All in favor? Any opposed? Madam Clerk, why don't you do that one? Unanimous?
Yeah, it was unanimous.
The following resolution was offered unanimously by the council. A resolution ratifying a memorandum of agreement between the Parish of Jefferson, City of Gretna, Town of Grand Isle, City of Harrahann, Town of Jean Lafitte, City of Kenner, and City of Weswigo relative to establishing a commitment in the development of the Jefferson Parish Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan update, 2015, parish-wide. Whereas in March of 2014, the Federal Emergency Management Agency notified Jefferson Parish that the current Jefferson Parish Hazard Mitigation Plan will expire in March of 2015. Whereas a current hazard mitigation plan is needed to receive funding from FEMA for hazard mitigation projects. Whereas in July of 2014, GOSEP provided Jefferson Parish with funding to assist in the development of the Jefferson Parish Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Whereas Jefferson Parish seeks to complete a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan to include all municipalities within Jefferson Parish. And whereas it is in best, it is in the best interest of all parties and the citizens of Jefferson Parish to provide commitment and cooperation in the development of this multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan update. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Harrahann City Council, acting as governing authority of said city, that Section 1, the Harrahann City Council does hereby commit to the efforts that will result in a memorandum of agreement between the Parish of Jefferson, City of Gretna, Town of Grand Isle, City of Harrahann, Town of Jean Lafitte, City of Kenner, and City of Weswigo relative to establishing a commitment in the development of the Jefferson Parish Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan update, 2015. Section 2, there shall be no cause for the city of Harrahann pursuant to this agreement. Section 3, the mayor of the city of Harrahann, and in his absence, the mayor pro tempore, be and is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to give full force and effect to this resolution. The foregoing resolution having been submitted to a vote, the vote thereon was as follows.
All in favor? Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays. Ordinance to?
The following ordinance was proposed, let's see where we are, I meant the wrong section, was proposed unanimously by the council.
Well, I don't know if it's unanimous right now, but who wants to propose it?
It was.
Murray?
This is the one that's up for adoption, right?
Yeah.
Thought it was unanimous. It was already unanimous. The following ordinance was offered unanimously by the council. An ordinance levying a tax of 14.04 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation on all taxable properties in the city of Harrahann for the year 2014, and authorizing the tax collector to collect the said taxes on all the taxable property within the incorporated limits of the city of Harrahann, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Section 1, be it ordained by the council of the city of Harrahann, Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, in a public meeting held on August 21st, 2014, which meeting was conducted in accordance with the open meetings law and the additional requirements of Article 7, Section 23(c) of the Louisiana Constitution, and RS 471705(b), that there is hereby levied a tax of 14.04 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation on all taxable property in the city of Harrahann for the year 2014. Section 2, be it further ordained by the council of the city of Harrahann, acting as the governing authority of said city, in the Sewage District Number 1 of the city of Harrahann, State of Louisiana, that the following ad valorem tax be hereby levied on all taxable property in the city of Harrahann, State of Louisiana. 2014 levy, 14.04 is the total tax. Section 3, be it further ordained by the council of the city of Harrahann, that the tax collector of the city of Harrahann is hereby authorized to extend said taxes on all the assessment rolls of the city of Harrahann for the year 2014, and she is further authorized to collect said tax on all property within the incorporated limits of the city of Harrahann. Section 4, be it further ordained by the council of the city of Harrahann, that when any taxpayer fails to pay the tax or any portion thereof, on or before the day when it is required to be paid, interest at the rate of 1% per month shall be added to the amount of the tax due, and such interest shall be computed from January 1, 2015, until the tax is paid. The interest provided for herein shall be an obligation to be collected and accounted for in the same manner as if it were part of the tax due, and can be enforced in a separate action or in the same action for collection of the tax. Section 5, the severability and repeal clause, as referenced in ordinance number 1566, is incorporated into this ordinance. This ordinance having been considered section by section and as a whole, a vote was taken, and the vote was as follows.
Motion by Murray, second by Baudier, to open up for a public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays. Anyone wishing to address the council in connection with this ordinance, please step forward. Motion by Baudier, second by Murray, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays. Councilman Hewitt? Councilman Murray? Councilman Baudier?
No discussion.
Councilman Shandling?
No discussion.
Councilman Landry?
No discussion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays. Madam Clerk?
The following ordinance was offered unanimously by the council. An ordinance to roll the millage rate forward, but not in excess of the prior year's maximum rates on all taxable property in the city of Harrahann for the year 2014, and authorizing the tax collector to collect said taxes on all taxable property within the incorporated limits of the city of Harrahann, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Section 1, be it ordained by the council of the city of Harrahann, Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, in a public meeting held on August 21st, 2014, and conducted in accordance with the open meeting law and the additional requirements of Article 7, Section 23(c) of this Louisiana Constitution, and RS 471705(b), the council of city Harrahann voted to roll forward the millage rates on all taxable property shown on the official assessment roll for the year 2014, and when collected, the revenues from said taxes shall be used only for the specific purposes for which said taxes have been levied. Said rates are as follows. Adjusted rate is 13.87, and the 2014 levy is 14.04. Be it further ordained that the assessor of the Parish of Jefferson shall extend upon the assessment roll for the year 2014 and the taxes herein levied. Be it further ordained by the council of the city of Harrahann, that the tax collector of the city of Harrahann is hereby authorized to extend said tax on the assessment rolls of the city of Harrahann for the year 2014, and she is further authorized to collect said taxes on all property within the incorporated limits of the city of Harrahann. Be it further ordained by the council of the city of Harrahann, that when any taxpayer fails to pay the tax or any portion thereof, on or before the day it is required to be paid, interest at the rate of 1% per month shall be added to the amount of the tax due, and such interest shall be computed from January 1, 2015, until the tax is paid. The interest provided for herein shall be an obligation to be collected and accounted for in the same manner as if it were part of the tax due, and can be enforced in a separate action or in the same action for collection of the tax. The severability and repeal clause, as referenced in ordinance number 1566, is incorporated into this ordinance. This ordinance having been considered section by section and as a whole, a vote was taken, and the vote was as follows.
All right. Motion by Hewitt, second by Murray, open for a public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays. Anyone wishing to address the council in connection with this ordinance, please do so now. Motion by Landry, second by Shandling, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays. I've asked Councilman Hewitt. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Murray?
No discussion.
Baudier?
No discussion.
Shandling?
No discussion.
Landry?
No discussion.
It was requested by one of the councilmen for a roll call vote on this. Councilman Landry?
Excuse me?
We're unanimous.
A roll call vote?
It's unanimous.
Oh, unanimous, I'm sorry.
It was unanimous.
Okay.
All in favor?
Nay.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Well, they can't be unanimous then.
Okay.
All right, so we got a roll call vote.
I think that's what you were starting with.
I'll vote yes.
Councilman Shandling?
Yes.
Councilman Baudier?
Nay.
Councilman Murray?
Yes.
Councilman Hewitt?
Nay.
Three yeas, no, two, three yeas, two nays, the ordinance passes.
I was wondering, Mayor, we've never done a vote like that. Why would we do this now?
I was requesting by one of the councilmen.
Okay. This was one of the changes in the procedure.
But at any time, a councilman can request a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is for introduction.
Who's going to introduce the news?
The filing ordinance was proposed by councilmen, this is for colonial agreement. What councilman would like to?
For the development agreement?
For the development agreement.
Oh, you can put my name on it.
Hewitt?
I'll do it.
Okay. Landry or Hewitt? Landry? Landry. An ordinance adopting a development agreement between JW Colonial and the city of Harrahann, Louisiana.
All right. May I just have one question about that? Have we ever attached the map to this ordinance, Chair?
I'm sorry?
Did we attach the map to the ordinance?
Yeah, there's a map attached to it. Anyone before the vote next month that wants to amend this, please contact the administration with your amendment so we can disperse them to all the council people before the meeting. Everyone all right with that?
Say that again.
Anyone that wants to amend this development agreement, turn it in in writing to the administration as soon as you can so we can disperse it amongst all the council people. All right, old business, Mr. Albassow, want to take the podium? Can you give a?
Agenda for old business, Mayor?
A short report on the progress in connection with what we're trying to do with the colonial property.
Do we need to vote to add this to the agenda? There's nothing under old business.
What?
Do we need to make a vote to add this to the agenda? There's nothing on it.
We just did first read.
No, I mean, under old business?
Yeah, you just said old business.
Yeah.
There's nothing under.
Yes, you do need to amend the agenda, since there's nothing underneath it.
All right, motion by Landry, second by Baudet to amend the agenda for old business. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays. Mr. Valvasso?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Two, two, two parts to this. First, I'll give you a progress report on the actual development agreement itself, and as the mayor said, please continue to give comments and, and any input, and that has been the rule, I think, for the last three or four months at this point. Anytime we heard anything at a council meeting, or even information that was transmitted to us, we put it into the development agreement. Where it stands today, we've put everything in there that we've heard. I know there's some unanswered questions, and I think those will be answered when we take it up, when you take it up officially. So, so that's where the development agreement itself stands. Now, with respect to other aspects, we have continued to do research on how we can find creative ways to, how, how will we say this, preserve the open space, to find some mechanism to, to keep the open space that has been talked about in the development agreement public. And I know the developers have reached out to several public entities to see if there are monies out there, or federal government, or state government, or parish government that might want to create a public park, but we have used our resources as planners to reach out to some other types of entities, and those being land conservation organizations that might take over the land under some creative type of tax agreements or land swaps. We've met with the Trust for Public Land, we've met for the land, with the Land Trust for Louisiana, we've also reached out to...
You say "we," Mr. Valvasso, yourself, the mayor?
Myself. Uh, it's really, really, our firm has done that. We've, we had a meeting with Jeff Charlet with one group, and the mayor did come in on that meeting, and they, and that group just wanted to meet with the city, and so this is, this is our efforts that we've been spearheading, okay? And then the other thing we've done is, we've reached out to David Wagner and David Wagner's group regarding the, the regional water management plan, to see if there's some creative approach to stormwater management and water management, and possibly some creative projects that might be used to, to apply to this piece of property. And we've also made calls to the Greater New Orleans Foundation, even the Baton Rouge Area Foundation, and some other national groups like the Rockefeller Foundation, and we're going to continue to do that, working with the developer and on behalf of the city to see if, if we can find some creative approach to this. And so that's the two avenues that we've been going down for the last several months.
Now, it is a fact, is it not, that the Land Trust of Louisiana has expressed some interest in taking over a project regarding Colonial?
They, they have expressed interest because of the, the type of project we have, the amount of land involved, and I think everyone agrees the possibility of putting, of applying some creative techniques to, to, A, keep the land open, but to use the land as an asset for the city.
And it is a fact, is it not, that preliminarily, with no commitment, but preliminarily, you and I, the city has been working on preserving forty-four acres of green space and twenty acres for some type of water pond, right?
Forty-four?
Forty-four. And twenty to sixty.
I'm going to, I'm going to say yes, up until your math, because last month we had this math discussion also, and if you put the word approximately...
I mean approximately.
Okay. I feel much better to keep the word approximately, because no one knows the exact...
I want the people to understand that this administration...
That's why I put plus and minus.
That's right.
This administration is one hundred percent dedicated to try and preserve as much green space on Colonial as possible with a group within the state that has met with us, and their initial criteria is they need about twenty acres for some kind of water, what do you call it?
A runoff, you mean, for the construction project?
The, the groups that we're talking to, and Land Trust of Louisiana is, is the one you're, you're referring to right now, but Trust for Public Land, they are willing to preserve any kind of open space.
Right.
But what we have done is we've said, you know, because of the unique aspects of this land, its position in the city, that we think a creative stormwater management plan might be the driver...
Right.
...that, that we use.
Right.
And so, your numbers of forty-four and twenty are reasonable numbers, but no one has done engineering studies to determine those numbers.
Correct. But in connection with this, we're being persistent, a meeting tomorrow with the Land Trust again, and with Parish President John Young, because there's got to be a coordination with our parish and this group, and maybe some federal possibilities, so Valvasso and Associates are working to get the federal government involved in this, so we are diligently, diligently trying to preserve your green space, as well as the quality of life that exists there. We're putting forth our best foot forward, and, I mean, I have some optimism in this, I think Mr. Valvasso has some optimism regarding this.
We do.
This is the real deal, it's not a fly-by-night group. This group, one of the groups we're talking to, it would be their first project in the state, and they just got here recently.
We talked to them two years ago.
Not this group.
The Land Trust, we talked to them two years ago.
Not this group.
We talked, we talked for Trust for Public Land.
Trust for Public Land, different from Land Trust.
This is different from the Land Trust of Louisiana.
This is a group that just landed here. They just landed in the state.
They're similar, and they're both very, very important in this field, but the one the mayor's referring to is relatively...
They just landed in the state, they're looking for a project, and we're trying to key in, that project should be the Colonial Country Club project, the green space. Now, the person that's here, who's the development director, is one of seventeen hundred people throughout the United States that work with money from the Gates Foundation and all these money foundations, they submit for, and, and we're all enthused, because this would be the first Louisiana project, right?
A major project. They've done some very, they've done like one lot here and one lot there, literally.
And, and...
But the name is Land Trust Louisiana?
Yes, it is.
The first project in Louisiana, so they brand new?
The first major one. They've, they've done single lots as demonstration projects around the state.
But this person, the directors of development's responsibility is to accomplish a major project. That's their job. Our job is to get them to do it here on Colonial, and in connection with that, we're trying to get them, they're looking for office space, to put their whole administration, and we're trying to get them to put it in the clubhouse. But we need to talk to Mr. Georges about that, and Mr. DeCody, and try to accomplish that. Anything else?
That's all we have, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And once again, that's Land Trust Louisiana.
For Louisiana, I'll give you the contact.
For Louisiana.
I'll give you the contact information.
Okay, so it is different from the one we spoke with...
Yes.
...several years ago. Um, and I must correct you, because we did have that discussion last month about the numbers on this.
Yes.
Once again, you have not done everything I asked, because I asked for eighteen months in Section five, instead of twelve months, and I did still want to make sure that we encompass all of our land that's in that, because it's development for the entire land, because it's two separate lots of record, and that the remaining acreage that you're talking about, minus the fifteen acres, does not add up to forty. You're missing approximately another forty. So, once again, I want to go on record that this is not adding up to the proper amount, again, for, and I asked for eighteen months, following approval of the lot, commercial zoning, that when we do this thing, not a twelve month, but an eighteen, and of course, um, a couple...
Please put that in writing, so we can submit it to the council members.
Well, it's in writing, it's in record.
No, please submit it in writing as an amendment.
It's in writing, it's in record. I will, but I'll be glad to do that.
Unless it's in writing, it's not going to be considered as an amendment.
It's in our record, this is an official record.
If you want it as an amendment, all councilmen, please put it in writing.
Is email considered writing? Is email considered writing?
Sure.
Okay.
Very good. But I want to make, make sure that it is in our, in our record, our official record, our official journal, that I've asked for it not once, but twice, and it's still not in there.
What exactly ask for it? Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, you want to put it in writing?
Would you, okay. He wants me to put it in writing, and my word here on the council obviously is not good enough.
No, it's just, we all need to read it, to see what it says.
Two things.
It's going to be an amendment, and it's, it's...
Two things.
It's not going to be in the document, it's going to be an amendment to the document that's got to be voted on.
Well, it's a draft, it's not an amendment, it's a draft.
It's an amendment, as of today, it's an amendment. That's the way it is.
Max, the city attorney, one question?
Yeah.
Hey, David, have we got the ordinance thing worked out? This is the proper way to do it? I know there was some questions about that.
And that's why it's being first read tonight.
Okay.
Yes.
Let me ask something too. Since this has some substantive, substantive changes in it, shouldn't it go back to planning and zoning? We discussed that last week.
Really, I don't want it to go back again.
It, it has some substantive changes in it.
Not the development agreement.
What is this, third, fourth?
Because it's changed.
I mean, I'll look at it more, but I don't think so. I mean, I think it's coming, it's gone through then, and now it's coming to you guys, and y'all are going to make the decisions.
Please, please note my displeasure.
Record the displeasure.
Your displeasure's noted.
Put it in writing.
Record the displeasure.
Let me put it in writing, let me send it in writing there. Let me send that in writing.
I understand this, whatever you put up now will be an amendment to this that will be voted on.
But it's still in draft form.
If the amendment doesn't pass, it's not going in the agreement.
Yeah, it's going to come before you guys, and if you want to change something from it, you can.
Well, just like we...
But you need, you need a two-thirds vote.
It's still draft form.
But that's what we always do. I mean, if something comes through first reading, and then we discuss it at the next council before voting, we, we've amended it here on the floor.
Right.
Yeah, but now it's going to come up as an amendment at the next meeting to be voted on.
It doesn't have to.
As far as, as far as public, as far as public's perception, this has been wide open and going on for a long time.
Nine, nine months.
Yeah.
Nine months.
Okay, Madam Clerk? Any other old business?
Excuse me, Mayor, do you mind, the Land Trust, this is before we got on this subject, Land Trust Louisiana, the folks you're meeting with, can you set up, or can Nicole help set up meetings with two councilmen, and so we can at least meet them?
Sure.
Understand what they're doing and their projects, and get a little bit more detail to the plan?
I just emailed y'all a link to, to their website.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Madam Clerk?
New business.
No more old business, new business.
All right.
Did we do the net against crime?
That's what we're doing. Requesting permission to block Berg Street on Tuesday, October fourteenth, 2014, from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM for the annual night out against crime at St. Rita.
Now, who, who would vote against that?
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays. Next is the wedding request?
Yeah, requesting permission to have a wedding reception at 165 McHugh Street on January second, from 7:00 PM until 10:00 PM. There are a hundred guests invited, music will be provided by a DJ, and there will also be a police officer at the reception.
Motion.
Is somebody here, the representative?
All in favor?
Is somebody here, the representative party?
Mm-mm.
They wrote a letter.
It's not till January, though, I mean, that's a good...
Yeah.
They want to get it all ready for the wedding, you know?
I think they have a police there, and they get parking.
They have to comply with that.
I wrote the letter, yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Five yeas, no nays?
I gave them the noise ordinance.
Um, Madam Clerk, next?
The fire millage.
The, uh, fire millage expires when?
December thirty-first, 2014.
So, in order to renew that, we have to put it on the ballot again, right?
It has to be November or March at the latest, if it, if it's going to get renewed, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to redo that. So, does, does anyone resist doing it in March?
I mean, what's the procedure?
It has to go, you know, they have advertisements...
Right.
...and just council meetings, and, you know, it takes a couple of months to get this thing on a ballot.
Okay, so do we need to make an approval?
And I'll be working with Hugh Martin, and I'll call him tomorrow after whatever y'all decide, whenever y'all want to get it on a ballot.
And then he'll prepare everything, right?
And he'll get, preparing everything.
So, it would be a special election?
No.
No.
No. It would be when?
Um, either the fall election, or the spring election is, the spring election and March is.
Sorry, I, I was, I missed it.
So, we're doing in, in the spring election?
Yeah, what's on?
It goes on to, we don't get it to, on the roll until the sixteen, 2016?
We can, uh, no, it'll, we'll be able to collect it next year, but spring is the latest, um, we'll be able to collect it this year, and if we don't renew it by spring at the latest, you know, then we wouldn't be able to collect it next year.
Yeah.
And that's five, five mils.
Five mils.
Yeah, it's huge.
That's huge. Renewal. Renewal fire.
Renewal, yeah. Yeah, if we don't get the renewal, because it is a renewal, it's not a, um, it's not a new tax of any sort, it's strictly a renewal, and God knows they need it, because...
This is the first step we're doing tonight, is the first step?
Their, their equipment is sorely old.
Y'all deciding when y'all want it, that's on the ballot.
No, I, I, it's almost...
Do we know what's on the ballot in the spring, Nicole? Do we know?
Give that to the man.
I, the police, I mean, the fire chief isn't here, but I, I do know of, you know, the fact that our, um, equipment that we have back there is getting older, we are having some more problems with our equipment, and, um, we have less than...
I just asked, but, you know, usually if we have a larger ballot with more on it, you get more participation with the votes, so that'd be a trial of advantage.
Right, exactly, but it's something that needs to be done, because if not, then our mills go down to minus five, so it'd be eight mills.
We don't have enough time to advertise it.
And there'd be no way that we could sustain a fire department with it.
So, is there a motion to do it in March?
Motion.
Motion by Murray, second by Hewitt. All in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed?
We don't need that.
To begin the procedure?
For March.
In March.
To begin the procedure for March, for fire mills, be on the ballot. Let me put that in writing.
No. You don't need that in writing.
And that fire millage, we've been having that for
Ten years.
Ten?
Ten years.
So, it was ten years, and it's just expired.
Yeah, this is the last year that
Which is basically half the fire department's budget.
It won overwhelmingly the first time it went through. They did a great job with it.
Yeah. Hope there'll be that participation this time.
Okay.
All right, Madam Clerk, where are we?
New business number four, yeah, high content ABO application for Doc Quick Stop LLC located at 1927 Hickory Avenue.
That's all right, Chief? Motion by
Mayor?
Yes.
I wanna say that this is probably one of the most complete applications we've had, that we have two of them, and
Four.
I have two right here. Yeah, the other is a berry.
Too late.
Two lates, and the two that were in, and thank you very much for that, Chief.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yeah, yeah.
Any opposed, five yes, no nays? Next is China Palace?
Yeah, high content ABO application for China Palace LLC located at 1915 Hickory Avenue.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed, five yes, no nays? Remember, you have two add-ons, or what?
We do, we have two add-ons.
What are those?
They are
Does everybody have the add-ons?
Yes.
I have it right here, okay.
She emailed them to us all right today.
And they're all right too, right, Chief?
This one's a high content
Chief, they're all right?
I have a question on one of them.
High content, ABO application for New Orleans Baskets of Blessings LLC located at 7121 Jefferson Highway.
Of blessings?
Uh, Baskets of Blessings, New Orleans Baskets.
And they needed an ABO license?
Yep. Oh, high content.
Wine in the baskets.
Oh, okay.
Which one are we on?
We're on the
Number four.
New Orleans Baskets.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
All in favor?
To suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rule by Murray, second by Bodie, all in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed, five yes, no nays? Then the vote, all in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed, five yes, no nays? The last one, a motion by Murray, second by Hewitt to put it on the agenda to approve. All in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed, five yes, no nays? What's happening, Madam Clerk?
Eastway?
Hold up.
I have a question on that.
All right.
Um, I don't There has a nose on this thing right here, and I don't know if we need to check with the Secretary of State if it's the managing partner or not, but I asked him, he said we should maybe get a recommendation from the city attorney. Are you a US citizen? No, are you a citizen of Louisiana? But in the top, you read, "Application for license must meet the following qualifications."
Where do you see you on?
Right here, it's the second.
Yeah, I'm just saying this.
This guy is a one applying, and he is a citizen of the United States. Now, this next guy, his name's one here as a member. But he, you know, in his title, a member.
Nicole? It's in the microphone there, so they can hear.
Uh, the first guy, the actual applicant, is a citizen of the United States, but one of the members, they're also required to, you know, fill out application all day. They are not a citizen of the United States, so I don't know.
I have this here too, Dave.
So, who is applying?
I mean, it's managing partner, you know, I don't
It's a partner.
I just wanna clear it up, I'm not sure.
It's a good catch.
It's a managing member or not, I don't know.
Managing member's part of LLC.
Yeah, it says the requirement says the citizenship and residence do not apply to officers, directors, and stockholders. I don't know what he is.
He's a member, is how it's signed.
He's a member, probably, if it's an LLC, so he's a member of the LLC.
Fifty percent member, I mean, that's I don't know, that's why I'm asking you.
Partnership, it's partnership.
I've never had one come through us with these noses.
Yeah, we haven't. We have none.
I don't know, Mayor, I can look at it, because it's, there's a lot on it, but one of them is you have to be a citizen if you're an applicant.
The actual applicant is
Well, we have them both.
Well, we have two options, one is to defer, the other is to do, we've done it once before, we temporarily approve it, pending, whatever it is.
I'd go for the fur.
I'm at y'all's call, but
I'll vote for the fur.
I would be inclined to go along with the fur alternative.
You'd be too.
I agree.
All right, motion by Shadow Lane, second by Lander to defer this?
All right, I'll take a look at it.
Better to be safe.
Is anybody here from Fastway Fuel Mart? No. All right, Madam Clerk?
Vote on it, defer.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed, five yes, no nays? Next, Madam Clerk, we have addressed the council. Anybody wishing to address the council, can do so now.
Perfect. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Chief Walker, and city attorney David Corcelle, and most importantly, citizens of Harahan. My name is Monique LaFontaine. I am a candidate for judge in First Parish Court, which sits on David Drive. I'm running for Division B. That position is currently held by Judge George Jacoby, who announced several weeks ago that he will retire to spend time with his children and grandchildren. I just wanted to come tonight to introduce myself. This is my first election, and so I'm meeting everyone for the first time, and if I meet you twice, forgive me if I have to ask you your name the same number of times. A little bit about my background, I've always considered Jefferson Parish my home. My parents were born and raised here, in fact, just down the road in River Ridge. Two parents who grew up here most of their life, they were born in Mississippi. So, River Ridge has always been my home, that's always where I've returned. The first house I bought was actually in, on Roseland Parkway, 500 block after law school, and my great-grandmother actually lived on that part of Roseland Parkway that subdivides and goes two ways, so I've spent a lot of time in this community. I now reside in Metairie with my husband, Paul, we've been married for three years. I have practiced litigation in the state of Louisiana, primarily in the metropolitan area, for the past 18 years. I graduated from Loyola in 1996. In addition to practicing in state and federal courts throughout Louisiana, I've also practiced nationally for some clients, but I won't bore you with those details. I would like to add, and I don't know that it matters to this crowd, but it does to some, my practice has been civil litigation. I've not represented, I've not been a criminal defense lawyer, but I think that the most important thing for me to convey to everyone, because this comes from my heart, is that the reason why I'm doing this, after practicing for 18 years in private practice, I reached the point in my career where I always knew I would, where it was time for me to give back to the profession that's been very good to me, and also to the community. And I think that, I believe that this position affords me both opportunities. It is a court that I believe, I can't quote you statistics right now, that has the most contact with people, you know, the 24th, the Fifth Circuit, the Supreme Court, the things that get to that lever, level are, they're not gonna see as many people come before them, but, you know, with First Parish Court handling misdemeanors, civil claims up to $20,000, lease disputes and such, and also traffic courts and DUIs, you're gonna get a large, you know, number of people. So, I think it's a perfect fit for me. I do have some brochures, some volunteer cards, if you'd like to read them, but really, what I would do is I would point, I'd prefer to point out that on the back is my personal email address that I myself read and answer, and also my personal cell phone number that I have with me, you know, in my purse right now, if you wanted to test it when we went outside. I'll be outside for a few moments after the meeting ends, and if you have any questions, please let me know, or call me, or email me, and otherwise, one day, I look forward to knocking on all of your doors, that's my intention, and I'll have my assistant with you, she's my niece, please don't run away and hide. We just wanna chat with you. Thank you.
You're welcome to leave some of your stuff in the hallway on the table, too.
Oh, that's very kind, Mr. Mayor, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council? Because at this rate, we're not, you know, we're creating payroll fraud up here, because we haven't spent a lot of time at this meeting. Nobody else? All right, Madam Clerk, where are we?
The secretary's report for July, revenues $264,632.77.
Pay bills?
Report.
And then we'll do the report.
The council paid the bills in July in the amount of $551,678.39.
All right, reports, Chief?
Report for July, the number of calls to service were 587. We had 12 auto accidents. Number citations issued were 75. Number charges were 98. We had 11 patrol requests. And that is, if you're going out of town, call a station, give us information, how long you'd be out of town, and we'll make a special request to go by your residence or your business during a time that you're out. There was 33 arrests made with 46 charges, there were two traffic arrests, three felonies, 24 misdemeanors, and 17 city arrests. We had one residential burglary, one non-residential burglary, three varsity thefts, and eight assaults for the month. Thank you.
Councilman Andrew?
No report, thank you.
Councilman Shannon?
No report.
Bodie?
Yes, I would like to announce that I will be running for reelection for my seat, and I will stand on my platform as I have always stood on it, and has always been the same. I will do everything I can to promote commercial taxes and commercial development in the city in order to keep taxes off of our citizens, and if anybody would like to discuss it, or any topic that they want to discuss with me, they can call me at 504-343-7762. It's 504-343-7762, and that's myself. If I don't answer, please leave me a message, and I will call you back. Thank you.
Councilman Hewitt?
Oh, we're saving her for last?
Well, next, yeah. Yeah, Councilman Hewitt.
You're passing her up?
No, she's next.
I wanted to tell Chief Walker that I accept your ice bucket challenge, and I would also like to give a donation to ALS, so thank you. Mayor, I wanna see you out there.
I'm sorry?
I wanna see you out there.
Is it Saturday? We'll see.
Saturday morning, 9:00 AM?
Well, now I gotta go with Paul Johnson, do the same thing.
Why you keep trying to pull Paul in?
We gotta do it at the senior center.
And you did it already? So, you made the donation?
Well, my, I propose, I'm optimistic that I could do with Councilman Johnson, and stand so close to him, that I'm not gonna get wet.
Yeah, you'll get a drop. Get a drop.
Councilman Murray?
I would also, I'm sorry, I would also like to let the citizens know that I qualified as well for the race in November for reelection, for my seat for councilwoman. I have enjoyed the last four years thoroughly, supporting the citizens of Harahan, and I look forward to knocking all the doors again. I did it the last term, and I successfully almost knocked every single door in the city, and handwrote thank you notes for the people who took the time to speak with me. So, I look forward to it, and I wanna listen to your concerns, and I'm here to support you and listen. So, I would appreciate your support, and thank you.
Councilman Murray?
Thank you very much. Sure is and isn't. Thank you very much, Mayor, and I promise I'm standing between both of y'all, I will accept your challenge. I will not be there on Saturday, because my oldest grandson is having his third birthday party, so I'm all excited, and so I will be at that, I thank you for that. Just a couple of things, congratulations to all of those so far who have put their names up and are willing to run for election. It's definitely an experience that we all up here have enjoyed, I'm sure. There are times that we've gone, what am I doing? Am I crazy? Have I lost my mind? But then, we have folks like you guys who come to us and ask us, and help us, and help us to help you, and that's what it's all about, is that we're up here to support you and do the best that we can for you, and we try to be stewards of our city as best we can. I am termed out, this is my last year. I had thoughts of running for mayor, I will not be running for mayor at this time in my life, but I may come back in four years, you never know what I plan to do, so I'm always leaving that option open. So, just to let y'all know, I still plan on being very involved in this city with the help of others. We plan on continuing on to try to do our best for this city, and if anybody has any questions, just because I'm quote-unquote "a lame duck" doesn't mean I haven't stopped, as y'all can tell. So, just call me if there's anything we can do for you, please. Let me know if you got a problem, if there's something that's concerning. Also, Mayor, I sent the mayor and the council a letter, an email this week concerning our budget, and although it has not been approved from the parish, our, actually, excuse me, rephrase that, our audit from 2013, it is now September, and I think of my eight years, this is probably the longest I've ever seen where we have not had our budget approved by the state legislative auditor. We are in a deficit, as we were last year and the year before last, so the $13,000 that we are going to generate from this very, very small roll forward is merely a drop in a bucket of the million point, almost four million, a million point four, that is, that's from last year's budget, will be a deficit in the carryover for this year. But anyway, it's very disheartening, as prices have gone up, our services have not increased, our service fees have not increased, and we still have an old infrastructure, unfortunately, and that's one of the things we need to fight, to find creative ways to try to raise monies, dollars, whatever it is, from whatever sources we possibly can, and to try to keep it off of the citizens, and keep from having to raise the taxes and so forth. It is, it's very disheartening to have to do that, but unfortunately, you know, it's our services, it's our city, and I think this $13,000 is gonna be, what, maybe $3 a year on the, we, she did the math, and it's about $3.01 a year on a household. I know that's technically not a lot, but for some people it is, so, you know, depending upon their financial circumstances. So, please understand that we do the best we can with what we have. This council up here has always insisted on a balanced budget, which is part of our requisite, and unfortunately, Mayor, it was overspent, you know, there's some extenuating circumstances to that, that we've had some infrastructure problems, some serious ones, we've talked about that, sewage and so forth. So, with all that in mind, we just need to be mindful that, number one, you can help by recycling, that helps, that helps a lot. Recycling helps on our dumpster fees, keeping things like the stuff out of the ditch, because when the things get finally to our sewer plant and ditch, we, you know, you got a diaper or something that goes down the toilet, that costs $3,000 to $5,000 to get it out of our sewer plant. You know, these are the kind of things that, they sound like a little bit, but they're a lot when they keep adding up throughout the year. So, just be mindful of this, the wastefulness that we have here, and that we do our best to try to make sure that we are all mindful of that, and thank you all very much, y'all have a nice evening.
One diaper in the sewer system costs us between $1,000 and $3,000 to fix.
One and three, I thought it was three and five.
Could be.
Well, because I know they were
But also, I would ask Councilman Murray, you know, next year, Jefferson Parish is gonna be in flux, and there might be some openings there on the council, not with incumbents, but with the new seats opening up, and you would serve us well, you would serve us well on that council.
I think we got a good person that is serving us.
No, no, I don't mean that, I'm saying
Are you listening to this?
There's gonna be openings, new openings.
Openings, oh, okay.
Yeah, brand new. Yeah.
Yeah.
But keep that in mind. You would serve us well. And what you said, you know, annexation's always been a way to try and create some new revenue, and we need to explore that again. We've, I don't think we've exhausted everything with the annexation, but we'll see. The two, I call them passages. There's two streets, and one is Elton John Stun, and the other is Lori Sophia. Now, these came about because the Corps of Engineers and the Department of Transportation met with me, the mayor, and said, because of the Pump to the River project, they were gonna have to reroute Harahan citizens throughout some sort of circular avenue through Elmwood, about a mile and three-quarters out of our way. And we resisted that, and we said, look, we don't think it's fair to go a mile and three-quarters out of our way to go one block. So, we decided to put in those two passages. One was Elton John Stun, and someone asked me, why did you call it that? Well, it's not a street, and it's gonna disappear once they move Hickory through and Dickory through, but it was named for Elton John, Paul John Stun, and John Young. And then the second passageway was Lori Sophia, and that was named for one of our city photographers, Lori Foray, and the daughter of one of our city attorneys, Sophia Corcelle. Be that as it may, it's not streets, they're passageways, but they, you'll be surprised, I mean, you all know if you drive it, how much traffic goes down those streets in helpful, in helping the citizens of not only Harahan, but River Ridge. Now, the parish helped us out, we thank Councilman Paul Johnson for contributing to the asphalt into that, as well as we got some volunteers, Anthony Sequera, Rob Chung, to help us do this. Now, we are gonna have to move these passageways, as the projects get closer to them, we're gonna have to reroute again, but we're gonna do it so that our citizens can have the least amount of turmoil in getting back to and from Harahan and River Ridge. Now, also, what happened was, the Pump to the River project, they're going down Hickory, and after they spent, I don't know how much money with engineers and surveyors, they reach a point where there's an obstruction that they didn't know about, and so they came to the city, and they said, look, we're gonna have to temporarily cut off your sewer system for the whole city for about eight hours. And we said, no, we can't do that, I mean, you have people who want to flush their toilets, you know, we can't. So, we got them to reroute temporarily, uh, and we got trucks to come in, in the event we had to haul out sewer to another plant. So, it didn't disrupt the citizens at all, we were blessed, uh, to have it work out where they were able to fix this, uh, temporary, uh, sewer. They call it an elbow pipe, and, um, how much longer it's going to last on Hickory? I, I don't know, I'm told maybe two more months or three. But that's not going to relieve too much, because we have River Road that's all tied up with the Pump to the River project, and then soon we're going to have Dickory that's going to be tied up with the River project, and I ask the citizens to please be patient, because in the long run, it's really going to help, we really believe it's going to help the city. We apologize for any inconvenience, but, uh, we're optimistic that, you know, once all is said and done, we'll have benefited our citizens. Mr. Boudreaux mentioned about the safest, one of the safest cities in Louisiana, and that's accurate, we were ranked number six out of the state, and people say, why is that? And I said, no, because the people in Harahan don't commit crime. Our citizens don't commit crime. Now, there might be some misdemeanor things, or domestic abuse things, or small thefts, but our citizens were so blessed, don't commit murder, rape, armed robbery, burglary. And then the police department, you know, we have, with people, so I'd say a hometown police department, I don't think so. I think we have an aggressive police department that tries to keep crime out of our city. And, uh, you know, we, we're thankful we have the officers, because they don't get paid a lot, or enough, they don't get paid enough. Hopefully, we're going to work on that next year and get them some more money, but, uh, the day-to-day, they put up, the day-to-day with probably a variety of, of obnoxious people. And overall, uh, they handle it well. I mean, I get, rarely get a complaint about police overreaching or abuse, once in a while. Mostly, I get a policeman call me up and say, can you help somebody because, um, you know, this, 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 and that, can we let them sign themselves out on a bond? And I'm saying, sure, whatever you feel comfortable with. You know, sometimes you get someone who, uh, is sick, or is taking a certain medication, and, you know, they just want a relative to pick him up and take him home because he's drunk, and we do that, we accommodate them, and we rely upon our police's judgment to make that determination. So, overall, we're, we're very blessed in living in the city of Harahan. I've been blessed to be involved in government, and, and, uh, I thank all the council people who are here, because they chose to run and be involved, and I'm optimistic the new people that are running and being involved will be just as energetic and, uh, sacrifice what needs to be done to keep our city, uh, going and ensuring that, um, uh, we have a great quality of life. Madam Clerk, what else we got?
Jared?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Lander, second by Shadow Lane. Does you hear it? All in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed, five yes, no nays?